Good evening. President Byrne, we're ready to begin whenever you are, sir.
Yes. Okay. Local.
Trustees Markwart?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Forrester?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
And President Byrne?
Here.
Trustee Takalka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay.
Trustee Schenk is here, too.
Yeah, there's somebody else.
Trustee Schenk?
Here and present.
Yeah.
Of all people to miss. Come on. Really?
Now, you have to swear it down. That is President Protem.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be Chairman Protem for the duration of the meeting.
I'll second it.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set to roll then, so would everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I was trying to get it synced. I was too. Roger. I was too. I was trying to get it. I was too. I heard you. I was pausing, so. Okay. First item tonight then is Village Manager, the FY 2024 budget process.
We skipped the citizens' public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Citizens wishing to address the board on something that is not on the agenda? Okay. All right. Now I can move on. So it would be to you the fiscal year 2024 budget process.
Yes, thank you. We are in the middle of our budget process right now. I just wanted to take a quick moment to review our upcoming budget calendar. We are near finalizing our proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. We're anticipating that that document should be ready for distribution to staff and the board by February 24th. We are planning on presenting the draft budget for fiscal year 2024 at the meetings in March, on March 7th and 21st, at those committee of the whole meetings. For transparency, we will also be posting a copy of the proposed budget on the village's website, and in addition, holding a public hearing on the proposed budget at our April 4th Village Board meeting. And if all goes well, we're hoping to have everything approved and wrapped up by our second meeting in April on the 18th. And then lastly, just wanted to remind the board of our special Village Board meeting tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:00 PM here at the Village Hall.
Okay. Next thing then would be Director of Community Development, update regarding special use ordinance for Urban Air, 413 North Milwaukee Avenue, Unit 200.
Thank you. This item was on the previous committee of the whole meeting and prepared for the omnibus agenda this, tonight's meeting. I just wanted to highlight one quick note on this. There is a condition of approval in the ordinance that was drafted for consideration. It was not discussed directly in the meeting with the committee of the whole. In reviewing this with the police department and the petitioner after the meeting, the petitioner is in agreement with a condition of approval. Condition number four that states the business shall provide its security plan to the police department for review and implement modifications once the facility is open, if requested by the police department. So since it was a deviation from what had been discussed, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that.
Okay. Anything else from staff? No? Okay, then omnibus vote agenda. Are we pulling item F?
If we could pull item F, there's been some interest in that item, as given the appearance of an objector at the committee of the whole meeting. I think the item warrants its own vote, its own separate vote. Thank you.
Okay. So then the omnibus would be items A through E and G through I with F pulled. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protem?
Cook?
Aye.
Can I ask about item D though, since we're?
Sure.
Even though we approved it. So that, that's the HVAC system for the?
Yeah, motion carried, by the way. Go ahead.
Yeah, motion carried. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Almost.
So the?
An update?
Yeah, an update on that since we weren't expecting that. Obviously, it needs to be.
It was included in our, our budget and presentation for the CIP. What we're doing is, there's a need for the boiler system. The police department has had some issues in terms of the ability for the heat to work within the facilities. We understand that there may be some changes within the communications center area, but this is for the boiler and it's not for the ductwork. So if there's new walls put in, et cetera, as part of a future improvements, we won't be throwing money away. It's really for the boiler plant and for the controls, but it is something that we had forecasted. We've done a good job with this building, Public Works, the Muni, the police building, and now this one's for the communications center. So it's part of our, our program to get through the HVAC systems, but it's more of a need than a want.
Okay. And after we do consolidate, a good percentage of the, the staff that's at the current building will be in another facility. Have we talked about what we're going to do with that building?
I haven't, I haven't had an opportunity to present any of those ideas with the board yet, but have, have talked with, internal with other village staff. I can tell you that there is a, my, my assessment is there will be a continual need for that building for police operations in the foreseeable future. And I do expect that, and there's actually a budget request in the upcoming budget year, to start some planning of how some space could be reutilized to the benefit of the community and, and the department operations.
Okay. And just to confirm, they actually need heat for those people there?
They do.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks.
Okay, then the pulled item was item F. Approval and passage of an ordinance 2023-017, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a children's recreation facility and amusement recreation or training facility. For adults for Urban Air Adventure Park, 413 North Milwaukee Avenue, Unit 200. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second. Motion of second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none then. Roll call, please.
Mayor Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protem?
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
There is no unfinished additional business, correct? So new business, approval and passage, the first item is approval and passage of ordinance 2023-020. An ordinance authorizing approval of expenditures to Uptown Motors for the purchase of one 2022 Ford Edge SEL all-wheel drive for an amount of $41,099.
So for this, Public Works is involved with procurement of the vehicle, but in terms of the details and the need, I want the chief to speak to that.
Thank you. You may recall, a few months ago, you authorized an ordinance for us to purchase three police utility Explorer vehicles. We've budgeted for four vehicles this year, but because of delayed availability and the change in the competitive pricing of those vehicles, we scaled back to only order three vehicles. We've since learned that those vehicles are not going to arrive by the end of the fiscal year, so we're going to continue to operate in the marked fleet. But there is a need for a, the, the fourth vehicle we were going to buy is an unmarked vehicle, and there's a need for that vehicle to be purchased. And we were able to find one of those vehicles actually in stock. We did some competitive pricing, actually, police staff along with our fleet manager, getting competitive pricing. And it might seem a little odd that we're buying a vehicle in Milwaukee, but they have the vehicle available. They're discounting the vehicle to a price that is competitive and no one's able to match that price. And importantly, the vehicle is equipped the way we need it. So when we buy a vehicle off the lot for these purposes, we have a pretty strict set of features that we're looking for. And there's some features we're not looking for, like a sunroof and some other, you know, fancy wheels that are so frequently loaded on these vehicles. So this will allow us to continue to meet the needs of the department. We have already started the budget planning for next year, and we'll have to push forward the purchase of those three vehicles that we've already ordered into the next year's budget. So this, I, I expect this to be the only vehicle we're actually able to buy this year. If there is a change and some miracle happens and Ford's able to deliver those vehicles, we'll be back in front of you before the end of the fiscal year. But by all assessments, we don't expect that to happen. So the request and this ordinance is to authorize the purchase of one Ford Edge all-wheel drive SUV for $41,099. That's a price that has been received and competitively bid with three other, with two other dealers, so this is the best of those three. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, this is for ordinance 2023-020. If there are no more comments or questions, then a roll call, please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Chairman Protem?
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Anybody else have any other new business or communication they wish to share?
I'd like to, I'd like to draw attention that February is American Heart Health Month, so check in on your cardiovascular health, make your appointments. And one thing that I'll be pushing a lot of friends and neighbors is, does somebody in your house know CPR? Countryside Fire Protection District Office Classes, I think Park District. It'd be great one day to say, no, most of our houses one day will have someone who knows CPR, because you never know where that's going to come in handy, as I speak firsthand. Thank you.
Yeah, let me echo that. The CPR, as a coach, I've been certified and recertified and recertified, and it's one of those things that I have never used, and I hope I never do. But it's one of those things that it's better to have it, know how to do it, and never use it than need it. And, and it's, it's a simple class, and the other thing is those AED machines, I've had a couple of people asking about the, you can't do it wrong. The machine is so simple, it, it walks you through it. You can't do it wrong. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, by all means.
A lot of those classes combine the AED training also.
Yeah. Yeah. By far better. Luckily, I've done it for, been trained for many years out of it, and unfortunately, yes, I've had to perform CPR twice in my life, so. Luckily, I have not, so. All right. Any other new business or communication? Not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We can do the co-session motion at the end of?
The committee of the whole.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn and go to the committee of the whole?
So may.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, or adjourned?
Okay, President Byrne, would you like to open the committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah. Committee of the whole meeting has called the order. Your study is approved at many of the whole meetings in January 17th, 2023. There are motion to approve.
Do we need to nominate a chairman of the pro tem first?
President Byrne, would you, would you like us to, do you want to run the meeting, or would you like us to nominate a chairman of the pro tem, like we did for the regular board meeting?
Yeah, you can do that, please.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman of the pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second it.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, then as the mayor pointed out, first thing is the approval of the committee of the whole minutes of January 17th of 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second it. Okay, motion of second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schenk?
Epstein.
And Chairman Protem?
Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. First item of business then is Catered Productions, 1000 Butterfield Road zoning code text amendment, catering in the ORD district.
Thank you. Staff has been approached by the, a prospective tenant and the property owner for a multi-tenant building at 1000 Butterfield Road. Cater Productions is an existing catering business operating for about 25 years in Libertyville, and has been speaking with the property owner at 1000 Butterfield to lease approximately, I want to say, 4,000 square feet of space. In reviewing the zoning code, the ORND district does not currently have a, a use category that would allow for catering. The closest use is a general convenience retail type of use. It sort of, it includes small shopping centers as special use and restaurants as a special use. Since the catering operation doesn't deal directly with the public, my interpretation was that it didn't fit within that category of being a, a use that would be there for the convenience of the other employees in that district. So what I have suggested for the, the business and the property owner is to apply for a text amendment to the zoning code. I've reviewed the other types of uses. I believe that catering would be an appropriate use as a special use in this district. The purpose of the committee of the whole discussion is to review both that, the text amendment request, to, to come to a consensus as to whether that seems like an appropriate use. And so they would go and begin the formal process, as well as any feedback on the special use itself. So there is, just at the bottom of the staff memo, there's a note of the feedback. The, the property owner did, in, in the letter that was provided with your pack, the property owner did disagree with my interpretation of the code and wanted to request that the item could come in as a special use without also having a text amendment. For the consideration of the committee, that would not slow them down. The text amendment would be handled concurrently with the special use, and the special use would be subject to approval of the text amendment. We could handle both at the same time. So from a time standpoint, it would not be an impact either way. And I, I do think it is the, the correct way to handle this, to have a text amendment be part of this application. So with that, I would like the, the business and the property owner to come present their, their, the idea for this petition.
Okay, so what you're saying though is that there would be no, this would not impede the process if, if this looks like a good use for this place. This would not impede the process whatsoever to do that.
The, the text amendment would not slow them down, correct? We, it would be done concurrently with the special use.
Okay. Is the petitioner?
Good evening. My, my name's Rick Strusenner. I'm actually the original developer, architect, builder for 1000 Butterfield Road, which just means I've been around a long time. First, I'd like to thank Andrew for moving this quickly in our world of leasing space. That's always critical. And I came tonight mainly because I did not think a text amendment really was necessary. Now, Andrew just explained that it might not delay, it might, the timing might be the same whether you do it or not. But I think after owning that property for 30, 40 years and the various tenants that we've had, that the special use language is very quite broad, you know? And, and I wrote in my letter to Andrew that that was originally a joint venture with Urban Development when the shopping center was built. And they had acquired all the land, all the way from where the shopping center is, all the way down to Butterfield Road.
Yeah, urban built, all of it.
Urban did, and we were their partners. We were doing a lot of industrial development at that time. And maybe even back then, we helped create the words in the ordinance. And the special use, I, I think they tried between the permitted uses and special uses, they basically eliminated manufacturing and outdoor storage. And I, I didn't put together a whole list of tenants we've had over the 40 years, but I'm not sure, a lot of them are not even listed in uses, but they're, it's never been manufacturing. And, and it's never been allowed to have outdoor storage, so.
If it's not going to slow you down, would you mind us making sure we're 100% correct with the wording on the, on the documents and that?
I'm, I'm glad you put it there, because I, I, I was more concerned about that one had to happen after the other, and that just so, I came to introduce myself. And whatever, I even wrote those words in my letter to the board of whatever your pleasure is, is my pleasure.
And you are right about urban.
Why don't I let the prospective tenant introduce himself?
And you're right about urban, because they built my home and we want a lawsuit.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Hi, I'm Michael Proskin. I've owned Catered Productions in Libertyville for 27 years. And I mean, we've outgrown our space probably 10 years ago, and considering the move to the Butterfield location. We, we're a 100% off-premise caterer. We're not a restaurant. We do not encourage indoor seating or, you know, people are only allowed to come in by way of appointment. We love to move to Vernon Hills and really, really excited about that space.
Well, I believe we've used you several times at the golf course.
Yes.
On, on a number of occasions, including our Monday night golf league, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from the board? I don't see a problem. And by the way, the, the, your services have been very good, having used them several times, so.
Comments? Thank you.
Your location in Libertyville, excuse me, currently, is it near residential, as this one is?
We are. We're, we're right on Peterson Road. Our landlord is Gold Eagle Liquors on Route, it's 137. And there are homes directly behind our, the strip mall that we're in.
Okay.
Then Andrew, what are you looking for?
The feedback that I was requesting, in addition to just confirmation of the interpretation that the text amendment was necessary, was consensus that the, the use seemed appropriate, at least enough to go to the public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if there are any considerations that could be given to the, to the business, so in preparation for the special use, any particular concerns? The ones that came to my mind were just making sure that the trash enclosure was appropriately located and sized. Any consideration for vehicles, sometimes catering establishments do have vehicles, if there's any guidance that the petitioner could take to help them be prepared for that, that petition? That was the sort of feedback that I was requesting.
So what's the, the board's pleasure, just have this move forward through the process? I believe so, because I, I myself one time was dealt with real estate, so I've had buildings and wheeling that were bi-residential areas of food processing and just making the arrangements and never had a problem. Yeah. Okay.
What was in the building before? Do we know?
It's a multi-tenant building.
Multi-tenant. All right, so are you taking the whole, both buildings that we see in the image here, or only a portion of it?
We haven't determined exactly the, the space, but no, would not be both buildings. I think I'm kind of leaning towards the smaller one on, on the south.
At the very south, yeah, the very southern, yeah. It used to be a sprinkler system. Want to come on up?
The total complex is 64,000 square feet, and we're talking 4,000 to 5,000 feet, so it's, it's, it's a multi-tenant property. So it's, it's less than 10% of the center.
So do we need a motion, or just consensus?
Then move ahead, consensus, then move ahead with the formal petition is all we would need.
Okay. Trustee Schenk? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Did you have a question?
So I'm a little bit unclear about this, Andrew. So you're asking us to, first of all, to decide whether or not it fits 15.3.7 under the special uses in terms of restaurants? Or you want to add another one, 15.3.11?
So the, this would, what I am suggesting for this petition would be a definition would be added to the code itself. And then the specific use table under special uses for the ORND district would include a catering establishment as defined. And then they would, they would have a special use petition in conjunction with that.
So just add it to 15.3.7, just add catering uses, and you would define catering uses along next to restaurant uses?
Yeah, real minor text addition.
And you just feel that it doesn't fit into the restaurant use, so just add catering and define catering?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect.
Okay, so trustee Schenk?
I'm good.
Trustee Markwart? I'm good with it. Trustee Oppenheim?
I'm fine with that.
Done.
Mayor Byrne, you're good with us moving ahead with this?
Yeah, it sounds fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is right across the street there, 830 West End Court, parking variation for medical office building.
Thank you. For 830 West End Court, staff has been approached by a contract purchaser, Hammers Partners, who owns medical real estate. This building is currently leased to medical tenants. It was originally constructed as general office, and over the course of the transition from general office to medical, it became non-conforming with the, with respect to our parking requirement. The, the concern of the, the purchaser at this point is that they would like the assurance that this, this building can continue to be used as a, as a legal non-conforming use. They would be subject to the legal non-conforming use restrictions of the code, so if there were to be damage or destruction, they would not necessarily be allowed to rebuild and re-tenant exactly as is. So as the contract purchaser, what they would like to do is what I would refer to as sort of a preemptive variation. They want to reduce that risk, eliminate that risk by getting a variation so that in the event they, they would need to rebuild or re-tenant, they would have, they would have the variation in place. At this time, they have surveyed the tenants and have determined that there is no actual demand, short, demand that isn't met with the parking. But they do, they would like to pursue this variation, because it is somewhat unusual request. I asked them to come to the committee of the whole prior to doing the formal application for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, Bernie Sitron is here to represent, and I believe. And I believe Chris Fuda from HAMSS is also here if you have questions for the business.
Well, before we get to that, and go ahead and come on up, Bernie. I'm not, we've really never had a parking problem over there in that area, have we? That we know of? I've never seen anything.
I have, I have looked through, I haven't been here all that long, so I had to rely on others. But no, I had, I was not able to find any documentation of a actual parking shortage.
Want to go ahead?
Thank you, members of the board. Bernard Citron, the law firm of Thompson Coburn, here today with Mr. Chris Fuda from HAMSS, who is the contract purchaser of this property. HAMSS owns medical office buildings nationwide. So they're buying a portfolio. This property is within the portfolio, is asked to take a look at it and look at the reports on this. And we determined that on paper, we're 28 parking spaces short. And we, again, we say on paper, as trustee Cook indicated, there really isn't an overwhelming, you know, there isn't an overwhelming shortage, there isn't any shortage. We don't fill the parking spaces in the parking lot. But if you look at it, and if you look at the code, we are 28 spaces short. So that is why we're seeking the variation. As Andrew, and he's worked very, very well with us on this, put it very, very simply, God forbid something happens to the building and we rebuild it, we're in the medical office building business. That's the only reason we're purchasing this building is because of the existing tenants. One day, those tenants will change over. One day, Andrew may not be there. We may not get as welcoming to put another medical tenant in there because we are pre-existing non-conforming use. So that is the reason we're trying to go forward with the special, with the special use, excuse me, with the variation for the parking.
Well, and it's 82% compliant, so that's not, it's not a, it's about an 18% variation, which is not drastically significant.
Well, I wasn't going to say that. We'll leave that up to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the board to ultimately determine how drastic that is. But that is the numbers available. But again, as evidenced by the fact, there just isn't an overwhelming need. We're not seeking to shoo in these people. And they've been there for basically many, many years. It's not just now. It's been over the course of the years. It predates COVID, and there was no issues with parking. And I think that's an important element to look at.
Comments from the board? Trustee Schenk?
Sure. If I understand correctly, for ADA parking, it's a percentage of the total number of spaces? Is that correct? So is your ADA going to be based off 132? I mean, shouldn't it be based off 132?
It's based off of the actual number of parking spaces provided.
Of the 108?
Of the 108 provided.
So the zoning requires 132. Obviously, we're not conforming. But ADA is, you know, if the zone says 132, shouldn't it be based off 132 to have ADA? Especially a medical office building?
I think for the consideration, I'm sorry.
No, go you. I don't know the answer to this one. This is up to you guys.
So I believe it is based off the actual number. I can double-check that in preparation for a hearing, but I believe it is based off the actual number. It is something that, given the use and the consideration for variation, it's something that could be part of that, that public hearing process.
So in part of that, yeah, part of the petition or part of the variance might be to increase the percentage of ADA parking. And with medical, that, you're right, that makes sense.
I was looking at your rent roll. It seems like it's almost all medical, more or less. There's a few that would, you know, but still, it's all medical.
So the short answer is it may exact be as trustee Schenk, you're saying. And what we would do, what the result of that would be is if we had to add additional ADA parking spaces, we would add additional ADA parking spaces, of course, to meet the code. And that would mean instead of asking for a 28-space variation, it may be 29 spaces. 30, so it would maybe increase that.
Each ADA is what, two spaces almost, right? Or for every two ADAs, it's like three spaces, I think, or something like that, right?
Whatever works out, that's what we would end up coming forward. But again, we're confident that we physically have enough parking to handle that. And we also have not had issues. And I respect, I used to lecture on the ADA, so I do know a little bit about it. So I respect that whole idea, and you're right, this is our medical. We really haven't had any issues with people, at least the tenants complaining that their patients, who are otherwise mobility impaired, can't find parking in the parking lot that works for them. But we'll do whatever the code requires us to do, of course. It's one of the standards, in fact, for the variation is that you meet all other code requirements.
Other comments from the board?
Is the building next door owned by the same company?
No.
To the east?
No. You're looking to that east area?
Yeah, what are you looking for from the board tonight? Just a consensus to?
Consensus to move ahead. And the feedback that has been provided, I think, will be very helpful for them on preparing a formal petition.
Trustee Forster? Appenheim?
I did a non-scientific study here. I just looked on Google Street Views and saw there were 25 open spaces approximately during that time, so.
Does it tell you what time that was taken?
During the daylight hours. I don't know exactly what time.
As part of our presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we will do a parking count. And we will do it during what we believe are peak hours because that is what I do when I do parking variations, is to prove to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the board that there is in fact, that it's not at 2:00 in the morning that there's 25 spaces open. We respect that.
Trustee Markwart?
The honest, I pass by it almost every single day. It's not filled, so. I don't see a problem with it.
Trustee Schenk?
Yeah. Have you guys paved your lot since this picture's taken?
Yeah, I don't know. Well, HAMSS does this all over the country. They are a fine, you know, doctors are particular, with all due respect to Dr. Appenheim. They're particular in the type of buildings they go into. We will have to keep the building. When it needs paving, we will pave it.
Mayor, any objections on your part?
No, no. You say Bernie, it's nice.
I'm sorry, I miss you here, Mayor Byrne. Be well.
Okay.
I'm trying.
All right.
We thank you. We look forward to coming back when we go through the process. Thank you very much. Always good seeing you.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is a requested amendment to the liquor code for Liquor Barn 700 North Milwaukee Avenue.
After the agenda was prepared and the packet was sent out, I had a communication from the business that they were not able to make the meeting. They are able to make the March 7 meeting, so I'll plan on bringing this back so they can explain their request to the committee themselves.
Okay. One thing to look into, because I didn't notice in your notes, since it is on here. I believe both Munnline and Libertyville have something in their liquor ordinance to allow for this because I know I've been to tastings in both of those towns.
Am I not correct, too, that the, I believe he has it?
Well, I did check a few towns to see what was available out there. I sent the business an example from Highland Park, and their response back was Palatine. And so they confirmed that the Palatine sample that is in the packet is what they're looking for. So what I would suggest is just have them come, explain the nature of the type of service they're looking for in March.
Well, and like I was saying, I won't mention any businesses, not to get anybody in trouble, if Munnline and Libertyville don't have those ordinances. But if you want to check with those two communities, I think they probably do. Part of it's because we've never had a liquor establishment of this nature until these two came to town. We've never had a liquor store in town. So that's probably why we've never had this. As opposed to several of the places in both Munnline and Libertyville have been here for many years, so. That can be part of the research.
Chief, can I ask you a question about this? Would this be something that you would want to be notified when they're doing the sampling? Just so you know if they're doing it, you know, not to underage people, you know?
I don't believe so unless, unless there was some trouble that came to our attention. I'm familiar with these and other communities. And I think if it's something the board's comfortable with, that probably these, you know, these managers can operate this.
Okay. Anything else on this? So it'll come back then, March 7? Okay. All right. Then if there's nothing else on this item, we need what, a motion to adjourn to go to closed session to discuss?
Personnel?
Yeah, personnel and approval of minutes.